We'd like to call to order the meeting for Johnson County Council this August 12th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Amy, would you do roll call, please?
Here.
Okay, if everyone will bow their head for invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts open, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we discuss and make financial decisions. We acknowledge the weight of this responsibility before us, knowing that our choices will impact our county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Stand for the pledge.
Flagellatus to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
Approval of the agenda. Amy, is there anything you're aware of we need to add? I know we need to add Michelle, correct? Michelle is asked under old and new business. Is that where we want to? Okay. Any other changes? So she's going to be number four. Anybody else? If someone would make a motion with the change.
With the change.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Ditmers, a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Any public comment? The floor is open for public comment. We would ask that it be limited to five minutes. You're welcome to come to the podium and state your name. We'll be happy to chat with you. No one, anyone online? Okay. No one coming forward. We'll move on to routine matters. And this is the part of our consent agenda. And by a single motion, the board approves the items that are listed, which may include salary ordinances, ordinance amendments, additional appropriations, reductions and transfers. Any items listed on the consent agenda may be removed by any council member and moved to the regular agenda. So is there anything on this consent agenda that anyone would like moved for additional If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by J.T. Myers and a second by Ron Dear to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item C, salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions and transfers. First up is our auditor.
Elizabeth Alvey, Johnson County Auditor. I'm just here to ask for additional appropriation. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, could you explain how much for the public and who it's to and what it's for, please? I know we have it in front of us, but if you could give a little explanation, that would be great.
It's for $41,000 added to our professional services. We had some additional invoices from Baker Tilly regarding our audit that was carried over from last year. Also, when I did the budget last year, I didn't account for Nihart data pit stop and imaging office that came out of that. So I'm a little short.
Any questions or discussion?
Just a quick comment. Elizabeth, we've talked about this a little bit in November. You might get with those guys to ask them to invoice us for any services provided so we don't have a similar situation.
I will do that.
That could potentially happen in '25.
Sure.
It's inventory carryover, right? Billing, billing carryover.
Yes.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
A motion, anyone?
Move to accept.
We have a first.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Ditmers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. During each board?
For the record, Greg Cantwell, Johnson County Surveyor. Before you, I have a request for an additional appropriation and a new item for printing. This is $11,957.35. This is an amount for the printing of our legal notices or notices for the reassessments.
Cost of doing business?
Cost of doing business.
Questions, further discussion? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a first by J.T. Myers and a second by John Mallers to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
While you're up there, could you give us the elevator speech of what happened at the meeting as far as the decision process?
It went remarkably well. We held the reassessment hearings out at the fairgrounds for all 49 of our watersheds. We had one that we continued, but the others passed. It was a long day, but successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Community corrections.
Angela Morris, Director of Court Services and Chief Probation Officer. We have two requests for additional appropriations. I'll go with number, you want to start with number one?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Under professional services for $40,000. This is a fee user account, so probationers, this is a community corrections fee user account, so our offenders pay into this account and then we pay our bills out with it. This is for cost and volume of drug screens submitted for lab testing has increased through our drug screen provider and then also for interpreter fees that we have a couple of participants right now that it's a high need of interpretation.
So again, it's basically the cost of doing business?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a first by John Ditmers.
Second.
Second by Ron Dear. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Number four?
Okay, this is for professional services also. It's a fee user account through the probation department. It's the same thing. It's for drug screens and interpretation fees. Side note, adult probation usually receives a grant through Drug Free Johnson County that helps offset some of those costs and we didn't receive it this year, which it did help and that was cut from juvenile probation received, just not adult, so.
Do you anticipate getting it back in the future?
We will continue to write for it.
Pardon me?
Will continue to write for it.
I thought you said if you want to continue to write.
No, 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 we will. We usually get three of them a year and this year we had two and adult probation didn't get, wasn't granted that.
And cash balances or?
Well, can sustain both through the end of the year, yes.
Okay.
And Drug Free Johnson County is administered by?
She comes here and has those funds allocated. It's a non-for-profit. They're not employed by the county. That's what you're asking.
No elected official on it?
No.
Okay.
Up for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve line item two, $65,000.
Okay. Ron Dear made a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Second by John Mallers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes.
Thank you.
Next, order of business is county council review of estimated property tax levy limits and estimated reductions due to circuit breakers for each taxing unit. And so I'm going to present that information. And when this is done, we'll need a first and a second and a vote. So this is the county council review of estimated property tax levy limits and estimated reductions due to the circuit breakers for each taxing unit. We have received and reviewed the estimated property tax levy limits and the estimated reductions due to the circuit breakers for each of the following taxing units. Blue River Township, Clark Township, Franklin, Union, Needham Township, Hensley Township, Nineveh Township, Pleasant Township, White River Township, Bargersville Civil Town, Edinburgh Civil Town, Franklin Civil City, Greenwood Civil City, New Whiteland Civil Town, Princess Lake Civil Town, Trafalgar Civil Town, White Land Civil Town, Center Grove Community School Corporation, Clark Pleasant Community School Corporation, Edinburgh Community School Corporation, Franklin Community School Corporation, Greenwood Community School Corporation, Nineveh Hensley Jackson United School Corporation, Edinburgh Wright Hagman Public Library, Greenwood Public Library, Johnson County Public Library, Amity Fire District, Bargersville Fire District, Hensley Fire District, Needham Fire District, Nineveh Fire District, White River Fire District, Solid Waste District, Johnson County. Motion for these units are not to exceed their 2024 property tax levy multiplied by the 2025 statewide growth quotient of 4%. So this must be, I need a motion to that manner and a second in order for this to take effect. Anybody want to grant, want to hear, he can read the motion. I said, that would be your motion. So I make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion for these units not to exceed their 2024 property tax levy multiplied by the 2024 statewide growth quotient of?
2025.
2025 statewide growth quotient of 4%.
Okay. I have a first on the floor.
Second. I want to get out of here.
J.T. Myers as a first to approve the estimated property tax levy review and Ron Dear, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's been a long day.
And it passes. Yes, it has been a very long day. Okay. Next on the agenda is basically to ratify that Councilwoman Melinda Grissimer will be the council representative on the Indiana Opioid Remediation Board. So we need to take a motion for that, right?
We're just, yeah, you're just voting to approve.
Okay, so we need to vote to approve that. We discussed it last meeting and did the email thing and Melinda has graciously volunteered, so.
Hold it there.
No, I need a motion first and a second.
Oh, I'll make the first motion.
Okay, Melinda's making the first. And J.T. Myers will make the second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And congratulations, Melinda, passes.
Yeah.
Okay. WIS salary study contract. Adam, can I ask you to present on that, if you would, please?
So the contracts with, too much, with Wagner and Chile, we've used them in the past to do salary studies. The issue with Wagner is they have a queue that we need to get in line for, otherwise we're at the back of the line and it may not get to us in a timely fashion. So after speaking with them, we need to get our contact with them really before October, so it's before you now. If the council is wanting to do a salary study for next year, we just need to get in their line now to save our space essentially and make sure that these can be done timely to give you all the, you know, the information that can be used for next year's budget.
So moving forward with our overall plan on streamlining the budget process and having accurate, on time, up-to-date information, we need to get the ball rolling now to be able to utilize it in 2025, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what we need to vote on.
So we are acting to ratify the contract? Is that what you're adding?
You're not ratifying, this is a whole different scope of work contract, so it's a whole new, a whole new one. So with the recent law change on county contracts, if this body wants to utilize Wagner, we'll then go to the commissioners for approval. What they've been doing recently is just deferring to Councilman Burton as the president to execute those contracts. But this is just the first step to get that change done.
All right, so what does the motion need to say?
That you're, one, it's just to state that the council wants to use Wagner for the salary study to then get it presented for the commissioners to either kick back to Councilman Burton to execute or they'll just sign it themselves.
I make a motion, we approve, move forward with the contract. Is that adequate?
For our purposes, it is.
Yeah. A motion on the floor by Mr. Dear. We have a second by Mr. Ditmers.
Waited me out.
Pardon me?
Waited you out.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes. Thank you, Adam. Discussion of community corrections bond. That would be Mr. Peters.
If I can interject real quick, we were having a sidebar when we were talking about old and new business. There's one other topic that Jeff will be talking about regarding road funding at the end of his presentation on community corrections bond as well.
Okay. Did everybody hear that?
Yep.
Mr. Peters will be discussing some road bonding at the end of this discussion.
Thank you all. As we talked last time, with the funding of the community corrections project, we needed to decide on amortization. Previously, your financial advisor had looked at a certain dollar amount, which would have gotten your amortization down to around 10 years. What you approved previously for the bond issue is amortization up to 20 years, which is standard normal. After looking at the 25 budgets that have been submitted and proposed, your financial advisor, Mike Reuter, has advised now that you may want to lengthen that to that 20-year period so that you have additional correctional facility lit monies available for operational expenditures and not committed to this debt service. We can do that upon sale. We'll just sell it for that 20-year period. Typically, whenever you have a bond issue at 20 years, it has a call period at 10. So if you decide that your income tax receipts are sufficiently high enough that you can put aside that much money, 10 years from now, you can go ahead and call all those bonds, use that cash to redeem them, and you will not have spent that additional interest. But at this point in time, it would give you the flexibility to have a smaller payment for a longer period of time.
Do you, I know the three of us were in on those meetings. Would either of you like to speak just for the public to let them know we've talked about it and we've looked at this forward and back or something like that?
John.
Really? Anything you wanted to.
No, I think, well, we've had, we had a couple of meetings now talking about road projects in general. And this is partially, I guess, this is the lit though, right?
This is community corrections.
Yeah, this is community corrections. Sorry, I shifted gears into something else and we did not talk about that. I wasn't in on that one.
That's why I prefer not to talk about it because we've not discussed this piece of it. We had a whole nother topic.
Okay, so I couldn't explain it any better than Jeff did, but it has been in discussion. Basically, we started out wanting a house payment for X amount of time, to simplify it. And once our financial advisor looked at our budgets, assuming everything goes as proposed, he recommended we extend that loan on the house payment by a little bit. And Jeff just gave the particulars. Is that a very simplified?
Correct.
Measure.
And that's really as simple as it is.
Okay, so that's basically what he's here to discuss. And we are to approve, give you approval this evening on making that change.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, we would like you as a fiscal body to determine how long you want this amortized out to that 20-year period that you've established in the bond ordinance. See, when we go to the sale, we can limit it to whatever we want, which is whatever you want. So I just wanted to confirm with you and get your approval that it is going to be 20 years or 15 or 10, whatever you choose. But to fit what Mike Reuter, your financial advisor, has advised, you should go with 20.
The 20, yeah, those are, yeah, those are the meanings. So I guess the motion would need to be that the community corrections bond needs to be extended to a 20-year period with, and be recognized in this meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Did we already take action to basically set it at 10 and now we're changing that to 20 or?
You have not. You've taken a formal action that says its maximum can be 20. I just want direction as your financial advisor on the sale.
Up to 20, okay.
To go ahead and do the 20.
And there won't be any early penalty for paying off sooner?
No, typically, when you do that bond call at this point in time in the markets for the last 15 or 20 years, they don't look at needing a premium. If we had something weird, we might do that. But yours is straight up, it is secured by the income taxes of that correctional facility lit fund backed by the property taxes of the county, so they will not require any provision.
Okay, I guess that was me, you and Mike Reuter. I thought these two were involved. I apologize.
I'd make the motion that we approve the bond for community corrections up to a period not to exceed 20 years.
We have a first.
Second.
We have a first by John Ditmers and a, yeah, Mr. Mallers, second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And go ahead with the road discussion, the road bonding discussion?
Yeah, we've had some discussions with the highway department.
Now already?
Yes, Mr. Ditmers was. Obviously, over the recent past, you've had a lot of discussion as to your commitments for I-69, other road issues that you have. And you have an inordinate amount of projects that need to be undertaken over time and prioritized. One of the things that we've looked at in these discussions is you have set aside $4 million a year for the last couple of years out of your general fund. You have also began to collect economic development income taxes, which you have segregated into a fund. And you're looking at these cash amounts to support these projects. And I believe through 2025, that's about $27 million. So that will get you started a lot on, one of your primary projects is Smith Valley Road. And it's going to be a couple of sections of that. But this $27 million that you have committed and accumulated from '23 through '25 will, again, get you started on this, but your total amount of projects are hundreds of millions of dollars. So one of the questions we had and discussed is, well, if you continue to set aside $4 million a year from your certified shares income tax in your general fund and utilize the next 20 years of your economic development income taxes, if you pooled those together, leveraged those and did a bond, how much would that provide for you in project funds? So not raising any rates, just leveraging your current revenue stream, we would estimate that would produce about $105 million for you in your project funds toward those road projects.
Those were the meetings that the three of us sat in.
Yes, and the highway department, if you look at how they have prioritized those, those two amounts, the $27 million that you have in cash, $105 million in the leverage over the next 20 years, would complete likely the project scheduled for '25, '06, '07 and '08. And then would also provide engineering and potential money for right-of-way purchases for those projects after 2028, which is always an important part when we look at financing something in big segments. The thing we're always waiting on are the engineering estimates. How much is that project really going to cost so that we know? If you can front-load those during this three-year process, it will make it easier for you to figure out how you're going to fund and finance those future projects. And as you all know, right-of-way acquisition sometimes takes a lot of time as well. So if you've got additional cash that you can float toward those projects that you know are going to be done, it'll help speed the process along and get you better numbers in order to figure out your funding solution and financing past 2028.
Well, and no doubt is a huge project, but I believe you've got a pretty good start on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think you guys have done a great job with segregating that money and having cash on hand to get it kicked off and implementing those revenue streams to start to tackle that project.
So do you need to walk away with anything from us this evening?
Do not. Just wanted to share that information. You know, again, $27 million in cash through 2025 would take you into a good start of the process. Looking at the timing from the highway department, if you wanted to commit to take care of these projects through 2028, we would probably be looking at doing a bond issue in 2025, maybe in the second half. You know, things we've been.
For how much? Did you say how much?
It could go up to about $105 million in project funds, so it'd be a little bit above that for issuance costs. There's also a kind of a nuance that we have to work out is because of the amount of these bonds and then being above your general obligation bond cap, they'll have to be structured as lease-rental purchase agreement. Because they're streets, you won't use the building corporation of the county. You'll use what is the building corporation of the redevelopment commission, which is called Redevelopment Authority. So you would issue these lease-rental bonds through Redevelopment Authority. And part of the lease issue is you cannot make principal payments on those bonds until such time as you can utilize the assets for which you are lease renting. In the form of streets, that would be fairly complicated. We would have to work out with bond counsel how that would be structured. Alternatively, and what other municipalities have often done, is you can pledge a replacement asset. So potentially these roundabouts and intersections and roads that the county has already constructed in our free and clear debt, you can pledge those as assets and use that for the lease. Then we won't have to have this capitalized interest period where you have interest being paid to bondholders without any principal while the assets are being constructed. As you can imagine, on $105 million, that's a large amount of money. So that would need to be worked through to see how it is we get that to work out in the county's best interest. But that is something that's been done in other places and.
And what was the reason for waiting until 2025?
You could go earlier. One, I don't think you'll need it for cash flow purposes until 2025.
We've got the $26 million, so we don't need to do it.
The other alternative or the other issue that I'm thinking of is, you know, we've been promised that we're going to have rate cuts. You know, the market when we ended last year, everybody said, oh, we're going to have six rate cuts. Didn't believe that, but thought potentially a couple. Here we are mid-August, we still don't have a rate cut, but potentially they're coming. If they are coming, you know, we have no rumors of additional rate increases. So if we can get into '25, we really have rate cuts coming. The further we get, the more rate cuts we get, the smaller the interest will be. And again, on something north of $100 million. And again, on something north of $100 million, every little bit of interest will be a lot of money.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
So with regard to the front end of loading or the right-of-way acquisition, the utility relocation, we have funds to go ahead and get those started, or?
Yeah, well, we've talked about with the Highway Department, based on the $27 million that you'll have committed as of '25, that will get them started to such time that we can work out the timing for an additional bond.
Luke, would you have to have engineer design before you can do that or be able to get started on some of these things? Because there's some kind of preliminary estimate we could do, or preliminary design?
Yeah, Luke Mastin, Highway Supervisor. So one of the considerations here is this is obviously a longer-term plan. Our projects don't happen very quickly. They're five-year projects from beginning to end, at least. What we've looked at, we kind of started with that overall project list that we provided to council in '22. But then we started assigning some potential construction years and prioritization, taking into account that a project that's going to get built in '29, we probably need to start design in '26 and right-of-way in '27. Some basic formulas, but generally about where things stand. So the, in addition to that, some of those longer-term projects that would not be covered by this time period for the bond, we would at least like to get some engineering assessments done. We have tried to, I would say, somewhat educated guess what we think those costs will be. But in reality, we don't have any engineering reports on some of those projects that we might be looking at in the future. So it's a combination of moving forward with what's already going, which is primarily Smith Valley, starting some initial phases of projects that we think we can construct in that dollar amount, that hundred and however many dollars. That also includes starting some other projects, even though we can't afford the construction on them. We could go ahead and start the design or get the right-of-way acquired, so that those are easier and faster to move forward if we find other funding sources or we apply for federal funding. And then for those longer-term projects, some assessments, engineering assessments, that would get us numbers that we're more confident in in the longer term.
So where are we at right now on Smith Valley in all that process?
It's under design. From a financial standpoint, at least up to this point, it's been, if we save that money that we're setting aside every year, we'll have enough to pay for that project about the time that all of the bills come due, all the construction bills due. In this scenario, with the bond, some of that savings that we have right now would be shifted to other projects that are high on that priority list to get them started, with the understanding that when the bond goes into place next year, that there's enough cash that comes from that bond that Smith Valley can still move forward. We're still, I would say, probably late '25 at best, most likely '26, before we start seeing the construction bills for Smith Valley. And that's when that, the big dollars start to disappear. Those are, those are the big costs. So as long as we have a, some sort of bond in place, we could go ahead and start using some of the savings we have now to start other projects that are on that priority.
All right, so to summarize what you said, that the actual shoveling of dirt on Smith Valley would probably be 2026?
For, for the actual road construction, yes. There will be a lot of utility relocation before that. But that's not terribly expensive compared to what the construction contracts are going to be.
So you did a cash flow, kind of a cash flow analysis?
Yes.
At one point in time?
Yes.
Was that a cash flow analysis of multiple projects?
That was just for Smith Valley. And that was prior to any conversations about potentially bonding the added revenue and the $4 million from the general funding. So where we are right now, and this is why it's just a discussion item, I've taken kind of a first stab at trying to prioritize those projects, which ones need to move forward with, to figure out how far down the list we get in 2028. I think was the time period we thought we would run out of money in the bond. So that is being revised. We want to make sure, if we're getting serious about a bond discussion, that we're confident that we're moving forward with the projects and what we think is probably the correct priority.
Well, we're serious.
Well, we are too. So we're refining that right now. So that would be the next thing that you would potentially see from us in this conversation is a time period applied to all of the different phases of those projects, and then a point where we reach the total estimated amount of the bond, and how far down the list that gets us.
Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, and John, you probably could help on that too. I believe all that summary that you did was in 2023. I don't know that the new council members in 2024, unless you have forwarded to them, got that, that long range, all these projects you're talking about? Because that was in 2023, wasn't it?
It was '22, I think.
Twenty-two.
Is this the same information?
It is, yes. So that report, I don't know if we've provided to the new council members. Certainly, we can.
Yeah.
Part of what we're doing now was what I tried to avoid then, which was trying to guess what inflation was going to be. Now that we're actually trying to project projects out and schedule them out, we're looking at estimating where we think, where I think, I guess, the inflation cost might be. And that's, it's kind of a trial and error. It's easy to apply an inflation cost to it, but then you look at that cost 15 years from now, and it doesn't seem reasonable. So kind of refining that as well. So what we will provide you will be where we were as far as that project list is concerned, with those projects then projected out to future years with an estimate of what the inflated cost for each of those phases might be.
Yeah, because I, and I remember the report, and that, I'm certain they might be saying, what projects are you talking about? And I mean, I'd have to go back in my file and dig it out, but I know it's there.
You didn't, I spent a lot of time on it.
It was there.
It was December of '22.
And I'm assuming this is some of the same information we've been going over?
Yes.
We've met twice. I've tagged it CHIPS, County Highway Improvement Program, but I think I'm the only one that calls it that. Our financial advisor, Mr. Peters, Luke, and his, I'm sorry.
Daniel.
Daniel.
Our highway engineer.
And the, us three, legal commissioner, a whole group have been meeting, doing short-term and long-term planning on trying to work on some of the highway stuff. So that's basically what he's doing, is bringing the first report, the first things that have come to fruition that need to be talked about.
So we will, this is really informative at this point.
Using a lot of our information.
We'll have better numbers for you as we kind of work through this process.
Thank you. A lot of hard work for everybody's part. Any questions for Mr. Peters? Anybody?
Thank you all.
I guess you're good?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we have added to the agenda our treasurer, Michelle Graves. If you'd like to come to the podium, Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you. Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. I'm the for you to, I'm asking to send to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy a current job description for review due to a discovery that an omission of a title may have had an impact on the resulting job classification.
Everyone kind of talked about it earlier in the meeting, and we moved it to this meeting, so I don't have any further questions. So I'm going to open it up to anybody else that wants to discuss anything or explain anything, or?
Just curious as to the story, what was omitted? I mean, that's fairly a general.
So when I took office in 2017, we were asked to redo all of our job descriptions. I think it had been over 20 years since the council had asked for that, and I was very new. What I did, and that was actually in 2019, I dropped the title "bookkeeper" from one of my employees, not realizing that that could have a negative impact on the job classification. And that's what I'm trying to have reviewed. Her, that position should be titled "bookkeeper," deputy treasurer. And along with leaving that title on, it should have a requirement of additional experience in bookkeeping. And so those are the two things that have been changed. When the council asked for our job descriptions to be reviewed and rewritten in 2023, that's when my chief deputy found the error, that we no longer had a bookkeeper.
And you're, just so the public will know, Michelle, your reasoning for choosing to have it done immediately rather than waiting until this new contract we just signed performs that service for the whole county in another six, six months? What, your reason for wanting it done immediately?
I believe this is an exception to the council's position of wanting to wait, because this was my mistake. This was a mistake.
From 2017 or '19?
Twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen, I believe, is when those finally got submitted and sent back, reviewed, and signed. So it's been signed without the bookkeeper title. It was reviewed without the bookkeeper title and the requirement of bookkeeping skills for that position. I am, I do think I should pay, I think there's a $150 fee for this. I am willing to pay for that out of the treasurer's budget under professional services. And again, this is to rectify what could be an egregious mistake on my part.
Okay, so if you'll just recap your exact request, then I'll open the board for.
I'm asking to send to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy a current job description for review due to a discovery that an omission of a title may have had an impact on the resulting job classification in 2019.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So what is the implication of this, of this leaving that off? What is the, get down to it, what does that mean?
Well, I think I have.
Does that mean less money for the position?
No, I think, yes, I think leaving it off resulted in it being classified as a lower classification. I believe it's a COMAT-2.
Okay, and that happened in 2019?
I believe so.
And it wasn't noticed until now?
We did not review those job descriptions again until 2023 upon request of council.
And was there a person in the, in the position this whole time?
Yes.
And they didn't realize they were getting less than they should have been getting or could have been getting?
It didn't decrease the wage, Jenny.
Oh.
If that's what you're asking, I think yes.
Yeah, so what is the, what is the issue then? I don't understand, what is the, what is the, the injury?
Well, we don't know if there's an injury till we have it reviewed. There's been a major error on the title of the position. The last time it was classified was in, the original time was 1986 or 1996. And then my submission was sent in incorrectly. So we don't know how that would have been classified in the 2019 submission.
And it'll be reviewed again?
Yeah, and it may come back that this job is classified right where it needs to be.
But then again, if, if we do it now, it's going to be done again under this new contract that's due in the whole county.
Um, it's not necessary. I mean, I, I wouldn't think that, and obviously it needs to go to them, but the whole point of it is to redo ones that haven't been. This, this position, this particular one, is just done now, I, I don't understand. It would not go.
One way or another, six months.
Unless there was some kind of, just something that changed in the duties between, I don't think that would qualify. I think there would say.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do feel that because this was my error, error, it's important that we correct it sooner rather than later. You know, I, we've seen how slow the processes can be from time to time, and I think it is a fair assumption that this could actually take longer than six months to correct. If it is incorrect, I'd like to go ahead and get it submitted as soon as we can, as early as tomorrow, get an answer, is it where it needs to be? Does it need to be changed? And if it does need to be changed and result in a salary increase, then we would still have time to get it in the first reading of budget for 2025.
So that's what the pressure is? That's, that's where the pressure is, is you want to get this done so that we can get it in time for the first reading of the budget?
Yes, and I first started working on this back in, in April of this year.
Any else having questions?
I got one more. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry if I'm dense and I'm not understanding. If this was correct in 2019 and then became incorrect, was there an adjustment in the salary at that point? I guess I'm not getting, I'm not getting what the injury was. I mean, it might mean more, more salary, is what you're saying.
Exactly, so we don't know.
But when it did say "bookkeeper," was, did salary go down when it became non-bookkeeper?
That was over 20 years ago, so we don't know if that would make an effect of this thing.
Twenty nineteen.
Not the original classification.
So you feel ownership, because this is your mistake, you want to get it rectified before you leave office?
I think this is a one-off. This isn't, you know, someone coming in wanting to rewrite all their job descriptions. This, this is a specific mistake that I made. It was found in 2023. I moved forward in first quarter 2024 to get it corrected, and I'm here today, you know, at budget time, trying to get it corrected. I do know that when we wrote, we wrote all the job descriptions in 2023, we have found that as a result of taking advantage of all the technological advances that we have, that the current job descriptions do not accurately reflect the work of what any of my staff does, nor the technical experience required. I'm not asking to send those, because the council has made it clear they want to look at those next year. But this one is a one-off, because there was an error made on my part.
Well. Any further discussion, questions?
Just don't see. I guess I don't see that the injury, I mean, really, if the person was really missing a lot of money, I would say, yeah, we should probably move forward. But since we're not even sure what the injury is, and there may not even be an injury, I don't think we should break what we're asking for the rest of the county for this one thing. I mean, if we're not asking, if the other departments can't do it, that's kind of my feeling. We got to be fair.
Anybody else? Do you have anything else you want to say, Michelle?
I would just say again, for the record, this is a one-off. This is something that I need to get fixed.
But we don't know that the, there is an injury. Well, I don't understand what the one-off really is. No one really knows what the one-off is or isn't.
The one-off is the request that this is based on an error, not just a change of job duties. This is an error in the job title. And it could result in moving it from a COMAT-2 to a COMAT-3. And if that's the case, you're talking $2, $3, $3,500. So it is a big deal, and it is egregious, and it's my fault.
There is the potential. Okay, now we're getting to it.
And I'm sorry if I didn't explain that clearly to begin with.
You did, you did fine, you did fine. So if everybody has other questions to answer and made all the statements they'd like to make, I'll open the floor for them.
Would it, let's say, what if? If it came back that it suggested that it should be the higher, then that is for the 2025 budget?
Yes, that would be correct.
Not for the remainder of 2024?
No.
Floor is officially open for a motion. I need a first for it to. I need a first for it to move further.
So I'll make a motion, allow the treasurer to make a submission to WIS for reasons of clarification on prior error at her expense.
We have a motion on the floor from J.T. Myers. Uh, I won't repeat the request. I think we know what it is. So now we'll need a second prior to a vote.
Can I just still comment?
After, we did it after, after, right, correct, has to be after, there's a motion on the floor.
She's right here. She's right here.
Okay, he usually stops me. Go ahead.
Well, um, you know, we've got the, the five percent raise, and I actually have been working with consultants. Um, I came in to today pretty well-prepared. I had been talking on a personal level with some consultants about raises for the year for my own people. And, um, after much talking with him, um, I felt very good about five percent. And he kind of agreed with me. Um, but won't the five percent that we're giving, won't that cover it? I mean, I guess I don't want to make the exception and then have everybody else come to us later.
Well, my, my question on top of that would be, I don't believe this is a monetary consideration at this point. It may well be down the road, but right now, this is just a procedural.
And you have to keep in mind too, that these employees have signed off on those job descriptions. And so she signed off on this job description with an error. Um, and I just don't know what kind of liability issues that gets the county in when you have someone working with a job description and a title that is not accurate. I just think it's to our benefit to get this looked at, figure out if it's right or wrong, and then move forward from there for 2025.
Okay, so now we're going back around and starting over again. So we all have the details. And one, we have a motion on the floor, to, to, first on the floor. So we have to have a second in order to move forward to a vote. So that's what we're waiting on now. Correct?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a first and we have a second. Amy, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Right here.
Aye.
What?
Aye.
He said no.
Uh, John C. Myers?
Aye.
No.
John Mallory?
No.
John Depper?
Yes.
Willa DeGeesimer?
Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear and for the record, this council is denying an elected official access to a tool needed to perform the work in the treasurer's office. Is that an accurate statement for the record?
I'll let Adam answer that. That sounds like a trick question to me. I can just give you the vote to your exact request.
So I, yeah, it's denying the access to use your contract with WIS.
And then how I answer that?
I mean, the motion was made and it didn't pass, so that's.
It failed.
It failed, right. Did not pass the portion vote, so.
That's all we're required to do, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going.
Aye. And it's the council on, Michelle.
I don't know. Well, I don't know that we have public comment. No.
No. Well, I didn't. It was just some clarity. Are we under contract to WIS?
We will be, yes. We will be next year for a new job study.
But are we contract? We have, we have, hold on. There were several letters engagement with Wagner right now. The one that was voted on tonight was just on the salary study for next year.
Right.
Which will go before the commissioners on the 28th.
So what happened to the job descriptions we wrote in the spring?
The ones that the council requested underneath the personnel files you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes. Those, we received, I think, sixty-three of those. Uh, the council thought at that time it was the best way to move forward and did approach WIS on looking at those individually for a hundred and fifty dollars apiece. But when the response was so overwhelming, quote unquote, the toothpaste we tried to put back in the tube and move forward to hire WIS to do all that needed to be done next year rather than start in the middle of the year and halfway do a project.
True.
That way to give everybody the opportunity next year to go through every job description they have. And once again, that would be their tool to move forward, low, middle, high, and have them, if they need to be reclassified, reclassified. So rather than do these sixty-three and then pick from the others that was decided as a whole, we would put the brakes on that project, keep the information that we have, and then start fresh with WIS, which is what this contract.
Correct. And the other thing is, at sixty-six, that is not typically what Wagner considers a, a normal amount. Usually per year, an entity would usually send no more than fifteen to twenty.
Right.
It would be in situations like what Michelle described.
Right.
Where there's a one-off. It's not that you're just adding these. It was that, uh, a classification was left off, title was left off.
It was felt that it was miscommunicated maybe by us that the job descriptions were, it was the same jobs. That, oh, but now I do the copying, I help with this and I help with that. Now I help with this and I'm cross-trained with that. Technically should not make a difference in your classification. But we, you know, we're not the engineer.
Well, just, I mean, and we can put it off, but I started this process in '22 about getting to COMAT 1, to COMAT 2. I came to council on April '23. I was told to wait till budget. When I came to budget, we had the employee, um, compensation committee. We were going to write those, so hold off another six months. I'm held off a year even though I've given more job duties. And it's kind of like Michelle, I took office in 2019, the year that the job descriptions were rewritten. So I feel like I've gone along with council for a year.
You have, and we thank you.
To get the COMAT 2, and now I'm going to have to go another year. So, and unfortunately, I don't have any accounts that I could do the one hit before, but I have four employees that are the lowest-paid employees in the similar offices that I've been trying for since '22 to get that changed. And gone by what I was told, first job titles, then finally the new job description. I thought they were going to be submitted. And I actually thought, and that was dropped from the employee compensation committee to WIS, that they were going to be sent to them. So I apologize if I, it's been a confusing process. And I'm, I know it has been for you too. I know it's been a lot of work, uh, when you're talking about the number of employees, but.
It has been confusing for everybody. And everybody's trying to get it right. And I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But there's not a question here that I can answer. I under, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so I just wait till next year then.
Well, I don't know that it's a wait till next year. Uh, there's, there's not going to be any job classifications that I'm aware of that's going to be switched mid-season.
Oh, no, I was going for the 2025 budget here.
But that has to be done.
Get the classifications for the budget, just kind of like Michelle was, so. That was in my letter when you guys were getting.
Yeah, we got it.
You'll, you'll see that, that it was, you know, two, twenty-five hundred dollars to most of my employees. Annual means a lot, so.
I have a cramp in my right leg.
And Pam, perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Pam, fairly, fairly quickly, perhaps, since this has come up during the day, a quick overview of what we're asking WIS to do next year. Uh, as, as I understand it, they're going to be doing, not analyzing sixty-four positions for reclassifications. They're going to be looking at the larger issue of wage and salary, uh, creating the, the tiers, correct?
Uh, you know, I've been in this chair for 14 hours. We may need to discuss WIS at another time. I'd have to look at the contract to answer that specifically for you.
We need to figure it out, from what it boils down to. We have to figure this out because the points are well-taken.
Yeah.
And we just simply, we can't run it, hash it out right now. Let's get it on.
For me to have an answer? I, I don't. But all I know is, doing, when you do one, those other people are going to be, want to be looked at before the 2025 budget as well. Was my, was my, just my thinking, so.
What, Adam, do you have a quick response to that?
It's my understanding that what Wagner's going to be doing is, just like it was last night, which is a countywide job study to make sure that salaries, job descriptions.
Like we're done in '19.
Right. So it's something, it's that study five years later in 2024.
That's comparing the salary.
It won't necessarily just be the sixty-three that.
Right.
Came in, so.
But everyone will have that option.
Correct. And I also, it is best practices for departments, elected officials to be updating job descriptions yearly to make sure that they are accurate and reflect.
Right.
Job duties, uh, truly just, that is a best practice.
These people have. They have done that, the job descriptions.
But they won't be reviewing, be reviewing all job descriptions. They'll be reviewing where they're at in the wage and salary world.
Well, you have to review the job descriptions to know if the wage is commensurate with what.
But, but they're not, they're not, uh, what? Oh. They're not reviewing three hundred job descriptions or whatever it is for accuracy. They're looking at where, the job description A is at this salary, is that job description as it currently exists at the proper side, proper salary level?
The other thing to remember is job, job duties alone don't dictate the salary based off what Wagner does. It's, it's experience, it's, uh, job requirements, whether it's education or experience or certifications, et cetera. That's, that's the driving force behind how something gets, where it gets classified. So you could add two dozen job duties to someone's job description. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be reclassified as a COMAT 1 versus a COMAT 2.
Right.
So.
Well, this, you know, there's always seems to be confusion about what we're doing. And I think that, you know, we need to clarify that part of it exactly.
We will be still responsible for doing, like each department, head will be doing the job descriptions like we did. We're not going to have them write job descriptions. So it will be up to each department to have those in place. So it will be a large, it's not just going to be, it's going to be everyone.
And a big, big part of those were done when we asked for them originally with the salary study.
Oh.
Several people did, like, that's what Michelle and, and.
Yeah, we, we did most, I, I think most people's won't change, but we do need to get in the habit of doing it every year.
Right, right.
That is something that should be done every year.
Okay, thank you.
I think we got a motion to adjourn. I'm not really sure. We were halfway through.
I'll do, I'll be glad to do it again.
I'm not sure.
You can do it. Hey, where are you going?
The door already does it.
We're done, man.
We get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Depper's day.
In the second, in the fifth, and the third.
Half an hour ago.
Hey, if we, if we hired an HR person, would this be something that they could handle? Help with? No.